This meeting of the Walton Hills Building Board of Appeals will come to order is now six oh one. Roll call of the members of the board, Mr. Velk.
Here.
Mr. Ray Hill.
Here.
Mr. Conkey.
Here.
I am Michael Cummins, Chairman. Mr. Johansson is not present since we have a quorum, we're authorized to proceed. This matter is an appeal of this decision of a building inspector by Martin Raw concerning the side setback requirements related to the residence. Act seven three three oh, the Cullen Drive, permit parcel number seven nine four dash zero eight dash zero one one. The applicant has requested variance from the requirements of section twelve sixty six point oh four E two dwelling setback requirements. Mr. Secretary, would you provide the history of the appeal?
On March twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, Walton Hills Building Inspector received an application for a building permit for construction of a garage addition. On March twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, the building inspector denied said permit citing Walton Hills ordinance section one two six six dash zero four E two, which requires a structure maintain a minimum setback at least twenty feet from the side property line in the country home district. On April third, twenty twenty five, the property owner requested a variance by filing an application with the Board of Zoning Appeals. The hearing was scheduled for April twenty third, twenty twenty five at Village Hall and the appropriate notices were given. The site was visited by the members of the zoning board of appeals, Mr. Conkey on four seventeen, Mr. Ray Hall on four twenty one, Mr. Cummins on April twenty first, and myself, I did a drive-by on Sunday, uh, the twentieth.
Thank you. Mr. Secretary, would you please read the ordinance in question?
The ordinance in question is, uh, the twelve sixty six zero four is dwelling setback requirements, E, schedule twelve sixty six zero four minimum setback requirements in the R one country home district, two is minimum side setback is twenty feet.
Thank you. The applicant will be asked to state his reasons for the appeal. Opponents, those in favor of the variance, will be given the chance to speak. Opponents, those opposed to the variance, will then be given the chance to speak. The board may ask questions of the applicant or the speakers. All comments shall be addressed to the board. All speakers will be sworn in before speaking and asked to state their name and address for the record. Would anybody wishing to speak, please approach, sign in, and be sworn. Anybody else want to speak? Anybody else? Any juror again? I sound or swear and affirm that these statements are true, hold truth, and I think of truth.
Yes.
Mr. Brown, would you please state the reasons for wanting a variance?
Uh, I was looking to get a garage built, an attached garage, um, for more parking, also some storage, because, uh, we don't have a basement, so it's gonna be a two-story garage, so an upstairs loft just for added storage since like we don't have a basement. Um, the variance, I guess, is because, uh, we're within the twenty-foot rule that, uh, so I need to appeal it. Seems like there's no issues, uh, there's nothing really over there, there's, you know, the neighbor's house is away, so that's why I'm here today.
Any, um, anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Questions for the board?
I have a question, sir. I'm James Conkey. You know me as the red pickup truck?
Mm-hmm.
I stopped in, uh, I got away from your wife or got away from someone inside the house. Uh, your neighbor over at seventy-three seventy. They have any grievance to this, or are they upset with it, they don't want it?
Would that be a meal?
Yes, it is.
Um, no, I mean, I'm pretty cool with them.
Okay.
You know.
That would be my only concern would be the neighbor you're directly affected.
Yeah.
I mean, you are
Correct.
down low and you were right, there's a big hill right there. Okay.
He doesn't seem to care.
Very good, well, he's not here appealing it, so.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Is that it?
You know, Mr. Conkey raised a question of the hill, could you just discuss the physical characteristics, uh, around where the garage will be?
Let's see, um, well, it's the only good spot, I feel like, in the yard, you know, a lot of people put their garages kind of in the back. I don't really wanna go in the back, uh, there's a slight decline, it gets a little soggy back there, you know, this time of year. Um, so really next to the house, aesthetically, I think it'll look better being attached to the house, it'll just be like a two-car and then another two-car attached. Um, you know, I'm gonna try to match the siding and everything like that, so it just looks like it's always been there. Um, there is a hill right there, which would be like my neighbor's backyard, he's probably a good two hun- his house is probably two hundred feet away from where garage is going. Um, there's nothing to the side, it's just his backyard and then even the house next to that is just a backyard as well and then the power lines from there. Um, no one's really behind our house either, we are kind of down in a bowl, so we're down below. So even with the garage being a little bit taller than, uh, let's say, the house, um, I don't think it's gonna be like an eyesore, I don't think it's gonna impede anybody's view, any neighbors, anything like that.
And the, the physical location of the house, um, in relation to, to your neighbor, should not have the same plane, the front is not on the same plane, your house is set back.
Correct.
That's correct.
Uh, it's about like middle of the yard, actually, probably the middle of the property is, is where the house is. Um, the garage is gonna be like two hundred feet from the creek in front of us, so I would imagine the house is about two hundred feet back from the street. Um, especially with, uh, the foliage about to come in now, you know, it's spring, summer, like I, you usually can't even see the house from the street.
Do you know the width of your house, of your property?
Two, two and three-quarter.
So it's a bigger lot?
Yes, pretty big lot.
I see Cousin Vinny's gonna help you with this?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Okay, so is he a construction guy?
Yeah, he is a contractor, he's, yeah, he's a contractor, he's done a little work for me already, um, so he's, he's, he's worked on this house and he's also worked on another house in the past for me that we lived in. Um, and he's, you know, he knows his stuff.
Okay.
Does the creek, um, where you have the, uh, bridge over it, the front, does it wind around to the back of your property?
Yes, it goes across the front and then down part of the north side. And then another creek, actually, that comes from Carr Brothers, comes under the bridge and, and actually two creeks meet to that one side, which is actually the opposite of where I'm putting the garage, the opposite side of the yard, and then the two creeks turn into one, run between me and my other neighbor and then go underneath Walton, down past the lake, and I believe turn into Tinker's Creek eventually.
The creeks are actually on your property?
Yes.
Okay, so they would limit the placement of any type of structure?
Correct.
Other questions? Okay, the board will go into private session to, to liberate the evidence and the testimony.
Yeah, thank you.
You're still holding that live stream?
It's, it's, it's gonna just keep live streaming.
Yeah, that's what, uh,
How are you?
Not driving by, I looked over and there's real strong fortress where they got like that metal like that, that's kind of like pillar and it's a bell in the picture.
Yeah.
And then I could tell by across the street, cause my, my buddy just saw that light house, the second from the last, over there.
I'm gonna do my whole backyard, but I'm just off my patio a little bit.
Yeah, this is a winter, you open the door, I'm out.
And then I went when we're sitting on patio, there's not too many.
Yeah. Yeah, if you're riding around and stuff, you wanna see, you know, the fence too. You can ask, this is, is that Jeff's, uh, he's in the summer.
That's Jeff.
Yeah. That's Jeff.
George is dead, fifty-five years from now.
Jeez.
He's all the time.
Here, in the military?
No, 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 manufactured plan. Auto, auto, auto industry.
Lots change, you know? We're, we're, the Ford parking lot, there's one of those businesses in there. Oh, there's another earlier?
Well, there's one on the corner and then one right after it.
Yeah, kind of.
Or the train carriage, yeah, next to the business.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, uh, I think it was Alexander and.
Cardinal.
Yeah, is that the only thing that's in them, right?
It's all, it's all support.
Well, the first one's going to be.
Did someone?
Yeah.
Sign this for it?
Yeah.
I wanna know who proved the sidewalk so good, they go around the poles, you know, it was built three feet over, it was the straight shot.
So it's actually, there's, that's a, um, it's a high-pressure main, gas main.
Oh, like running right?
You're only allowed to encroach upon so many feet on that.
I mean, I figured their head would be up for reason, cause it's just.
You know, so did I, and even in the plans, it didn't look that drastic. So we, we called in a media meeting after that thing was formed and, and they showed us everything and, and that was, that, that was the biggest challenge with the first building is that high-pressure main because Ford had signed an easement for that forever ago. And, um, yeah, you're, you're only allowed to encroach so much, and then even filling, how do you see the grade change there? Um, that was, that was a huge undertaking to be allowed to do that with that gas main there.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so it, it proved, proved difficult for, um, the drama when they were trying to, trying to put up building one, but, but yeah, the, the.
Yeah, there's an answer, how, how ride's so weird.
Yeah, yeah, like, well, like I said, it didn't even look that drastic in the plans and, and that's we, we, we're like, whoa, what, what, what are you doing?
Yeah, and just trying to make it like it is.
Trying to even get it removed in the snow.
Right, that's what I thought of, and then cut that little bit grass.
Right, right.
Is that sidewalk running down eight, or is it just for Alexander?
So it's on Alexander and eight, so we negotiated that with the developer.
Mm-hmm.
It'll continue when they continue to build buildings down towards the line. And then we received a, received a grant, oh, about safety grant, to put sidewalks on both sides in North Hill all the way to Brick.
Oh, bro.
Alexander, those, those should be in, in, uh, twenty-six, so.
Yeah, they're not bad, well, they're, you know, walking.
Yeah, they built a casino and attracted the people and there's been some incidents, some accidents because of that, people walking on the road. I apologize.
It's alright. It is, uh, six eighteen, we are back in session. In the case of an area variance, the board applies a standard of practical difficulty. That is, does the evidence demonstrate that a variance would comply with the purpose and intent of the zoning code and that the literal enforcement of the zoning code would result in practical difficulty? We make the following findings of fact. First, whether the area, whether the variance is a use or an area variance, we determine it as an area variance. Whether the property will yield a substantial return and there can be beneficial use of the property without the variance? Yes, there can be beneficial use of the property without the variance, it is already being used as a residence. Whether the variance is substantial and the minimum necessary.
I'd like to comment on that. Um, looking at the lay of the land and where your location is, I believe that is the location it should be at. You are encroaching, not encroaching's a wrong word, you're asking for a ten-feet, uh, towards your neighbors.
Mm-hmm.
I do not believe at all that's a problem, I don't believe anybody's gonna see your garage, your neighbor's definitely not gonna see it on top of that hill. I do not believe you are destroying the neighborhood at all, I believe it's a good location. Yes, sir?
Whether the variance will adversely affect the delivery of governmental services such as water, sewer, trash pickup, and fire safety, Mr. Ray Hill?
There should be no, uh, disservice, uh, interruption of service delivery or an impairment there, so no problem with that.
Uh, whether the owner purchased the property with knowledge of the zoning restrictions, uh, we assume you purchased the property, um, knowing of the zoning code since it was in effect when you bought the property, so.
The twenty-foot variance thing?
Yeah.
I, 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 I just found out about it, but.
But when, when did you buy the property?
Seven years ago.
Okay. Whether the owner's predicament can be obviated through some other method other than a variance, um, I believe, uh, the answer to that is no, a variance would be required. Whether the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance will be observed and substantial justice done by granting variance. Uh, I, my personal opinion of that is the answer is yes, that, um, spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance would be observed. Whether the property in question has unique or exceptional circumstances or conditions that do not apply to other properties in the area in the district.
Um, your property is definitely different than anybody around you. Is what it is.
Yeah, I think we noted in the, um, testimony that, uh, you have the hill on the side where the garage is gonna be, which blocks views, uh, of any of the other property, adjoining property owners. Uh, the garage would probably not be seen from the front, the side, or the back. Uh, you have a, over, your lot is bigger than the typical Walton Hills lot, or the minimum lot requirement of an acre, uh, you have over two acres. Uh, the creeks are a special circumstance that would limit the location of any structures. Anything else I'm missing, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Whether the conditions necessitating the variance exist as a result of the actions of the owner, um, I think the answer to that is no. Whether the essential character of the neighborhood would be substantially altered or whether adjoining properties would suffer substantial detriment as a result of the variance.
I do not believe, um, adjoining property is gonna be affected at all by this variance.
Whether the granting of the variance will confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied to other lands, structures, or buildings in the same district. Mr. Velk, thoughts on that?
I do believe that, uh, no, he would not be, um, granted any special privileges, um, everyone is entitled to extra storage. So I think that would, that would make it equal for, for him.
Correct, okay. Whether a literal, literal interpretation of the zoning code would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district, and I think, as Mr. Velk said, um, storage is, um, common in the district, either a storage unit or a storage building, which, um, or, or a basement which you can't, don't have, so, um, I think, um, not granting the variance would deprive you of rights commonly enjoyed in the, in the neighborhood. Alright, any other findings of fact? Kind of a motion on the appeal?
Uh, grant the appeal.
Mr. Conkey has made a motion to grant the appeal.
I second that motion.
Motion has been seconded by, by Mr. Ray Hill, uh, vote on the motion, Mr. Ray Hill?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Velk?
Yes.
Mr. Conkey?
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes as well. So the variance is approved, this decision of the board is final. The applicant shall apply for permits in accordance with the variance within twelve months, after which time, if no action is taken, the variance shall become null and void. So good luck with your project. Okay, just take a short break. Okay, we'll be back by six thirty or so.
What was that little, little big pickup?
Uh, it was a little Japanese truck.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, it was cool, cause it had a hydraulic dump that on it and stuff, so I used it a bunch that summer. And I was doing interior, it looked really good, I really liked it, but insurance was crazy on that thing. It's not as comfortable as you would think, but insurance, it only did a few progressive.
Why do I have to do that?
Cause there's not like a typical vent upper on it, or whatever, and, you know, it was just kind of a weird thing.
Yeah. There was, there was trouble with that place.
I had a place, yeah, I had everything, it was a whole new one.
I assume that was a lot.
I mean, it was weird, I would only pay a couple grand for it, I could see you gonna take insurance off of it. You'd be around the yard, right, but I feel a little bit of that, but, I don't know, there, there's the, uh, so, so.
What kind of a bridge you got?
It's a two thousand five DX, uh, fifteen hundred, two cylinder diesel, two cylinder diesel, it's got a front end runner on it.
Yeah.
It's got a three-point hitch on the rear. We took it to an insurance.
Yeah.
They had a dozer plot, cutting jack, I sold those off. I used to pull this stuff into the truck all the time and whatever.
Yeah, I had a, a massive purchase in, uh, two.
I saw a red one, I figured.
Yeah, I loved that, uh, should be several years this summer, I wanna do. I'll be back, um, back on tomorrow. Particularly the slide on the lake, it's in the middle of the lake.
Yeah.
There's a concrete quarters of each pole, so you get out, so, here's a lot.
I had John Deere's, uh, several years.
Yeah, I like John Deere's, I got a lot of them, I wonder if there's some great degree things, that's forward, what was down?
Yeah, it is, it was mid-teens right before they put all the issues correct on, so it's still kind of death or anything.
Yeah, mine's, uh, they're two eighteen, so there's no death on it.
Sixteen or something.
Mine's a two thousand eighteen, there's no death on it.
No, yeah.
But, um, price is crazy, you know, I'm sure you see it here and, and stuff, and people.
Only getting a trade is very different from ours from, uh, too.
Yeah.
Actually, the stuff on that tree.
Yeah.
Benefits of the doubt a little bit there, but.
Yeah.
I saw that on here, I'm advertising, uh, about the trades, um, they all want to invest interest.
Yeah, I don't have too much use of it right now, but, uh, I think she'll take it sometime, you know?
Yeah.
I'll take this last one, and it's nice enough to turn around, make a little money on it, sell someone a good loan, they're saying, I'm gonna do a lot. Instead of be that, but it's too far on, um, the, the location.
Yeah. Do you have any, I'm, I'm gonna get some smaller, um, I got a sixty-inch stack, I have forty-four, you got any, you got, you used?
Right now I got two acres.
Barely, yeah.
That's about the way to that outside.
You know, I think I'll only get the best of the tree.
See, too many of those, I can get those new from Husqvarna.
Yeah, I think this, this one was only gonna sell, oh, I think you're not selling big box stores anymore, I would've sold it.
I'm not sure, but we ordered the ones that are not cheap, cheap ones, um, they're higher one, and they have good transition stuff, and so the whole, the trans, that are.
Oh, I understand.
The lower end of our Husqvarna track is a bicycle house.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause we did the next size up, that, they come with like small first.
Yeah, if I'm on fifty-four, yeah. Something.
I don't have any right now, there's a lot of those, but I have.
Yeah. Cause I got a couple things I wanna get rid of, and, and, I have a, a theater track, I'm getting hurt, it's made of spring pods. About a year ago, I just sold it to a store, and, uh, it's been big of a, it's, it's nineteen forty-nine. And, uh, it's been big about this, it's nineteen forty nine. Castle and girl says, Peter, you give us a high rate. Had a lot of growth, it was, it was, it was a huge thing. And I just got by, it was my place, it was my son's. I didn't feel comfortable in that one, I don't know what it means, I don't know. I need to get some new steps on it. I didn't myself, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't sell it. Everybody, that, we did on real easy and stuff. So I'm, so. I basically, I do that. But simply, I got, I got a cheap, uh, it's six or eight years. I have to be glad I'm old. Today I found, it's just, I tried. Now, uh, I remember pushing the truck, I don't know, she wanted to feel it. She said, why don't you go on the other side?
That's new and all of it.
Yeah, there's some snow.
This meeting of the Walton Hills Board of Zoning Appeals will come to order. It is now six thirty-two. Roll call of the members of the board, Mr. Velk?
Here.
Mr. Ray Hill?
Yeah.
Mr. Conkey?
Here.
And I'm Michael Cummins, Mr. Johansson is not present this evening, but we have a quorum, so we can proceed. This matter is an appeal of the decision of the building inspector by Mark Henning concerning the construction standards paving and the landscaping along street frontage requirements related to the industrial property at seventy-one forty Northfield Road. The applicant has requested a variance from the requirements of section twelve ninety-two point one-one requiring all parking, loading, and access areas be paved, and twelve ninety-eight point oh-four requiring landscaping as specified in that section in all front, corner, and parking setback areas in the industrial district. We'll hear both requests in a unified hearing and may approve both, neither, or a combination of one and not the other. Mr. Secretary, would you provide the history of the appeal?
On April third, twenty twenty-five, Mark Henning, Engineered Construction LLC, applied to the Walton Hills Planning Commission regarding the development of a ready-mixed concrete plant at seventy-one forty Northfield Road. The planning commission determined that the proposed development did not meet their requirements of section twelve ninety-two eleven related to surface paving and section twelve ninety-eight point oh-four relating to landscaping. The planning commission deferred action to allow the property owner to request variances from the zoning board. The property owners then requested a variance by filing an application with the zoning board of appeals. The hearing was scheduled for April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five at Village Hall, and appropriate notices were given. The site was visited by the members of the zoning board of appeals. Myself, I did a drive-by on four twenty-one. Mr. Ray Hill?
Four twenty-one?
Four twenty-one, and Mr. Conkey?
Uh, sixteenth of April.
And then Mr. Cummins on fourth, uh, April twenty-first also.
Thank you. Would you please read the ordinances in question?
The ordinances pertaining to the variances, the twelve ninety-eight point zero-four landscaping along the street frontage. All areas within the required front or corner, side, or parking setback, excluding driveway openings, shall be landscaped as required below. The following minimum plant materials shall be provided and maintained on all lots or developments, except lots devoted to single-family detached dwellings. A, three large deciduous trees shall be provided for every one hundred linear feet of line, or lot frontage or fraction thereof, not including driveway entrances. B, each tree at the time of installation shall have a minimum capillary of two and a one-half inches and a clear trunk height of at least six feet. C, twenty shrubs shall be provided for every one hundred linear feet of lot frontage or fraction thereof, not including driveway entrances. D, all areas not devoted to trees and shrubs shall be planted with grass, ground cover, or other live landscape treatment. E, trees and shrubs may be aggregated appropriately. The, um, the second ordinance this is pertaining to is twelve ninety-two point one-one, construction standards. All driveways, parking areas, curbs, and bumper guards shall be constructed in accordance with standards established by the following. A, paving all parking and loading areas and access drives, with the exception of driveways accessing single-family detached dwellings, shall be improved with hot-applied asphalt, concrete, brick, or permeable pavers approved by the pri, a village engineer prior to issuance of a permit. Cold-installed asphalt, cold patch, chip seal, and gravel shall be prohibited. Such paving materials and base materials related thereto shall be capable of supporting an anticipated load without damage. The owner shall, at his or her expense, maintain the surface and repair any disint, disintegration of the surface by patching and sealing when necessary.
Thank you. The applicant will be asked to state his reasons for the appeal. Proponents, those in favor of the variance, will be given a chance to speak. Opponents, those opposed to the variance, will then be given a chance to speak. The board may ask questions of the applicant or the speakers. All comments shall be addressed to the board. All speakers will be sworn in before speaking and asked to state their name and address for the record. Uh, anybody wishing to speak, please sign the, sign-in sheet.
Thank you. Eric. Here. Yes, sir.
I solemnly swear and affirm that the statements I will testify to are true, for culture, and nothing but.
Amen. I agree.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
No.
Okay. Mr. Henning, would you please state your reasons for wanting a variance?
Uh, I'm speaking tonight as well, uh, for the owner who had his wisdom teeth extracted today, so he is unable to make it. So the two variances we are requesting, as you clearly stated here on the landscaping. So if you see the plants and you looked at them going down Creek Road, and if you've driven down it, which I'm sure you have, you can see there's really no other type of deciduous trees and shrubs or bushes of the, of the like nature in any other property driving down Creek Road. So we are providing a seven-foot-high wood fence, you know, to give a nice little screen, a little barrier again into the property, and to, you know, put all these trees and bushes and shrubs really just seems to be an overburden, to be honest with you, going down an industrial parkway. And, you know, if you kind of figure out your numbers there on almost five hundred lineal feet of road, you know, you're probably looking between ten to fifteen thousand dollars in just materials alone of, of shrubs and trees at the caliber that is requested, and the number of bushes that are requested going down there. Not to mention you have a little bit of a swale, a little bit of a minor ditch that happens right there, so, you know, even just from a, you know, from fence line to, to roadway, it kind of goes down and it dips, and it would kind of be even an awkward appearance, to be honest with you. So, again, we're asking for relief on that, uh, from a financial perspective, and even just maybe a practical perspective. And then on the hard pack, again, this is a request by the owner, again, it would just be cost prohibitive to, to put a, a concrete or asphalt pavement over the entire, uh, area on the site that, you know, his operations are going to be occurring. Again, if you look on the drawings here, you'll see that we did provide, you know, nice asphalt paving here in all the parking lots. We do have concrete, you know, right by the, the repair shop and going out into the very first apron, uh, coming back. But the majority of the area where, again, the trucks are going to be coming in, dumping off their loads of gravel, sand, et cetera. You know, again, we are just requesting that to be a hard pack, again, just like every other facility in the, in the, uh, region. Again, just from a cost prohibitive perspective, to, to do all of that would be, um, outside the bounds. So those are the two, two variances that we are requesting tonight.
Thank you. Any, uh, last chance, any opponents, proponents, anybody else want to speak? Questions from the board?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You addressed the Creek Road entrance.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned nothing at all about your entrance or your, uh, facing Northfield Road.
Oh, that will be landscaped, yes, per the, per the requirements in the code.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we are gonna, and I, and again, I didn't address that just because we weren't asking for a variance in that. But again, that's kind of the, the side that we definitely want to beautify, because the building's there, the parking's there, so yes, we're going to be having, you know, trees, shrubs up against the building. I mean, it will be definitely a, a nice, uh, appeal, again, to the driver bike going on Northfield.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Now, to that point, on the drawing we're looking at, it only has landscaping about halfway across the frontage.
Right, that's, is that's where the bridge starts going up and the property kind of peers off to the side, and that's where you start getting all of the overgrowth, you know, between the bridge and the property line.
Why is there not going to be landscaping?
That's not our property along there, I mean, it's just all overgrowth.
From?
You wouldn't even, you wouldn't even see it, because, I mean, the land just dips off between the bridge and the property. Honestly, not even be of any significant, uh, purpose, to be honest with you, with the way the existing braid works with the bridge. And that's all infilled with scrubs and trees and all kinds of stuff between the bridge and the property anyway.
I'll jump in here, I guess.
Go ahead, please.
From the drawings that we have, at least half of the frontage of Northfield is open until you hit the wooded area. So there's a lot of room there for landscaping.
Well, right after the, uh, the entrance into the concrete site, again, it's really kind of the incline toward the bridge, you know, it starts in the upward direction. Uh, again, we have taken the fence line, you know, along there, which is a seven foot high, cuts along this whole property line here, and the trees all the way up to this point.
No, I'm just, uh, this is making me confused, this is, this is property line.
And again, this was a, you know, this.
Certainly, that's. So that's right-of-way.
Yeah, maybe this should be brought back to their, their purposes.
Okay, I, I just, because I know we spoke of planning about this technically not being property, but then, we just wanted to make this sense this once.
Yeah, maybe that needs to have a term, yeah, that's.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we'll fix.
So that's more parallel with.
I'll double check, yeah, I'll double check.
All right, but we're, we're confident about this being kind of right-of-way line, relatively.
Yes.
Do you, uh, fill us in on what you guys just discussed? Would you fill us in on what discussion was?
Yes, I apologize, so, we should have a screen. The right-of-way line that you see indicated on the plan there?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody got that?
Mm-hmm.
We're, we're going to go by that, this, this may be this property line that I was indicating, that I just caught?
Mm-hmm.
Like, that, that may be, uh, that may be incorrect.
Okay.
Okay, so I would, I would say, any questions or anything, would, I would, I would go with the right-of-way line. That looks appropriate to me.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Mark agrees, so.
Yeah. Get that corrected.
So with respect, so i- it is our interpretation of the code that you have two frontages. You have frontage on Northfield Road, you have frontage on Creek Road.
Yes, sir.
Your request is Creek Road?
Correct, sir.
Okay.
So we would, of course, you know, make sure that there's grass planted along that whole, um, area, again, between the road and the fence line, and, you know, and it'd be kept up, of course, we're just asking for relief on the, on the vegetation.
You have two aprons on Creek Road, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you're saying you don't want to do any landscaping between the aprons?
That's correct. Along the whole property line. And that's going to be where the trucks come in, into the property here on the north side, and then they'll come around after they, uh, get filled with, uh, with the concrete, and then exit out onto the southern apron.
So there would be a flow, you know, one way or the other, from this apron through this apron?
I apologize, I'm just, I'm sorry, just to make sure that we're on the same page.
So you're talking about, there would be a flow?
Correct, that's correct.
Either way, this way?
This way, yes, that's the way it's coming out. And there's going to be no truck traffic coming off of Northfield whatsoever, so everything will happen off of Creek Road.
This would be the primary drive?
Correct.
Is there any reason this can't be concrete?
Well, again, I would just say that right now, until he really figures out how his operation is going to work, we don't want to commit to a particular type of, again, uh, hard pack, or I should say a hard surface, because, again, this may shift, he may want to move it over. Again, it's right now a little bit in the state of flux until he actually would see how it looks best for the site. Because this is going to be a mobile unit, this is going to be like a large, uh, unit like, uh, SGEs, okay, so this is going to be, or, help me out, you're not it.
SRM.
SRM, thank God, it had HE in my mind, uh, SRM, but, uh, again, that's going to be a very small movable plant here that can be moved, again, relatively easy. And so it isn't, I don't think we want to commit, again, to that this is a particular drive that you have to drive on, because, again, it may shift a little bit. So we're, and again, even from a cost perspective, that's quite a bit more concrete. So if we can keep this area hard pack, is what we're proposing.
Yeah, if you would go to the microphone, so we make sure we get this on the record. Could you explain to us what you mean by hard pack?
Uh, well, again, it's a, it's a surface that's, again, it's like a chip and tar. Again, that's, again, where you're going to have a dust-free, uh, hard surface, again, that is just going to be a lot less expensive than a concrete, you know, and you would probably at least have to have a six-to-eight inch concrete, um, thickness here, again, to support the weight of the trucks. So, again, that would be cost prohibitive too, and even an asphalt would tear up, again, with the weight of the trucks, and asphalt is not practical either. So a hard pack surface, again, is going to give you the grindings that give you the best use for the trucks, you know, running through there, that's not going to tear up the, tear up the, uh, property.
Isn't this concrete plant? Don't you get good price on concrete?
That's, that's exactly what he's doing, yes.
Okay.
But it's, it still costs money.
Additional questions? Mr. Coleman, you?
I, I just.
Yeah.
Just, just satins.
It's prohibited.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're looking at the ordinance in, in question, and, and right there it says, cold-installed asphalt, cold patch, chip seal, and gravel shall be prohibited.
Understand, and that's why we're asking for a variance.
I just wanted to make sure we understood.
Oh, we, yeah, we understand.
Anything else, board?
What did, what is, uh, what, what, what would your, your, your end user's, um, uh, solution to mitigate any type of dust or anything like that? What, what is, what, do they have a plan in place, or?
Well, you're going to definitely have a dust filtration system, again, where they are going to be, you know, discharging the, uh, various gravels and whatnot into the, uh, into the hoppers, but, I mean, as far as that's concerned, it should not create that much dust, because it's going to be, again, primarily sand and gravel and water.
And I think one of the reasons that the village has an ordinance about hard surface is, uh, the, um, dragging, uh, concrete, or, um, gravel, or, uh, dirt, whatever, onto the roads, when it's not concrete, or it's not a, a hard surface. Can you address that, can you talk to us about that?
Even if it was a hard surface and there's contaminants on the, on the surface, I mean, you're still going to, you know, maybe have that particular issue, but we do have a, uh, a, uh, a, a truck wash, again, that they can go through, again, before they enter out back onto the road, you know, to help maintain, you know, the roads in a, in a cleanliness condition. So I know that would be something that they would have to take upon themselves to make sure that they're not going to be tracking any of the materials out onto Creek Road. But regardless, whether it's concrete, asphalt, or hard pack, I mean, it's still, you know, a truck tire.
Mr. Ray Hill?
Yeah, I, I guess the hard question I would like to ask is, you're wanting, uh, concessions on landscaping, limiting landscaping. You're wanting concessions on the, uh, hard pack surface. Now, what are you going to compromise to offset what?
Given you a beautiful building and a, and a site that's going to be prosperous for Walton Hills.
Let me pick up Mr. Ray Hill's point and ask it a different way.
I don't know what he meant, I mean, as far, are you asking for something else in return for the, for that, or?
Well, I mean, what are you giving up? If you're, if, if you're not going to do the landscaping according to what the plan calls for?
Sure.
You're not going to do the, um, surface, the hard surface for the driveways.
Mm-hmm.
What, what are you giving us back? I mean, you're asking for all these concessions, but you're not compromising on anything else.
Uh, well, I guess that's for the point of the discussion we can, we can have, as far as, you know, back and forth, but at this point, we're just asking clearly for a variance between, for those two.
Let me ask Mr. Ray Hill's. Let me ask Mr. Rayhill's point, Mr. Rayhill's question, just a different way. A variance is appropriate when there are physical characteristics that make the ordinary, um, application of the zoning code inappropriate. Something special, special circumstances about your property. What's special about your property that does not require a hard surface or landscaping?
Well, a hard surface here really isn't gonna be honestly that practical again for the type of truck, truck traffic that's gonna be driving through here, uh, number one. Uh, and again, I think the only other, um, point I would just make to you is, you know, right now that particular piece of property is an eyesore. And this is not gonna be a, a well-maintained site with a beautiful building and, you know, a nice fence that's gonna help kind of, let's say, block all the vision of that particular site as you enter into your, um, into your village. And that being said is, you know, we're gonna do everything that we can to make sure that we beautify that, that little special corner as you enter into your...
Well, you're not gonna do everything, you're not gonna landscape it.
Yeah, we're gonna landscape on Northfield.
But you're not gonna landscape Crick Road? And you're right, it is an eyesore now, and that's why we have a zoning code, so we don't maintain eyesores.
Well, uh, again, I would just say that again, if you've driven down that road as I just did before I came here, again, it's just a vast sea of, of nothing at this point, you know? So again, to do that along this 500 feet, I mean, is it accomplishing the goal of an industrial driveway? That really, it's not gonna be as critical for your, uh, main road, which is Northfield.
Our purpose is not to rewrite the code, our purpose is to find special circumstances to make the code inappropriate. I'll ask you again, what are your special circumstances?
Well, all I can ask is that, uh, this is the discussions that I've had with the owner that they would like to have some relief from, and so we're asking.
Any other questions? All right, we're gonna take a short break to deliberate the testimony and the evidence.
Okay, thank you. You're on live stream.
If you were to kind of worry this in relation to the adjacent building, I know you have more margin on the property, you would totally be approaching about nine. But I, I would have to double check for your district. The unique situation you have is the size of the property and the size of the lot, which exists in the market, which is huge, which is random. Not, uh, not this, that's not random, but the size of the building, size of the lot, which is all random. So when you make changes to something that's existentially forming with a whole section, um, uh, you have, you can send it to the county records. If you have somebody that they have this...
I have some stuff there.
But I would start with this, and it is non-stable, most of the time, I can tell you that it can help you with that.
We have a pretty good idea, open on a email.
Yeah.
And you play, I said, first thing I drive it up and I want to, so, we kind of go in and on with that. And if you can get this edition done, we may open for a little five X as well.
I heard you, I'm gonna come too. Really, what's your concern?
Well, generally what this has said, it's, we just don't have enough room, we don't have enough parking, we don't have enough, so it's all those things, uh, and this would get it on. And actually, it's all cheaper to do the other options, and one of the ones is to come down there. And I have enough time to, I have, I have, in front of ours, so.
I mean, I don't have to leave the building.
No, no, I don't, I'm not mistaken, this is what we mean, I mean, we definitely, uh, we don't have a response, so we, so we just need... Yeah.
Because that was a rumor and I'm like, whoa, it's terrible.
This is what it wanted so bad. Do you want to mutate any more, stand on this, or is it, I'd say things went higher than that.
Yeah, because the parking is ridiculous, that's crazy.
I know, I know. Kevin, who are so...
Yeah. Yeah, Kevin, I always am.
Yeah.
Young man, but he's not like a government, he's a very, like, very nice man.
He is a very...
Very nice, but, uh...
I think you spend a lot of time in Florida.
I thought it was, I wanted to distract, stay in the closet for a while. But it's not the closest. So I don't know, that was, uh, it's, it's, it's very, it's very...
Yeah.
It's got a nice house, it's got some, uh, uh, homes.
With gas.
And it was by there, you know, it was a, it was a random, oh, I didn't, I mean, uh, yeah.
I've got drawings and I get Google stuff.
Yeah, but I mean having a survey is gonna definitely help you know how to get some information about your variance or whatever.
It would be so beneficial not only would we get to hire more people, it's awesome.
For sure.
To handle the business, but again, we did dinners on Friday nights for a long time. And unfortunately, we're kind of in a dead area at night time. But when I was gone, down the old day, into uh North Berlin is, I wouldn't say, the ground zero is a bar with food, not a nice sit-down presentation.
And you're, you've got a little gem right there.
We did, and if we wanna, I wanna reface, we wanted to do it in the beginning, but we spent so much money on the structure, it was a disaster.
Sure.
My family and I get in there and then definitely we found out, holy cow, I, I can't believe they did ballpark once we got working up, we immediately nailed two by fours, a Friday, five jacks and four by fours to hold the building up. And then they go from instructors, there were no quarters over that building, we had soft floor, bringing new, new materials to that into four quarter room of that building. Had to sister all the walls on the outside, back doors and cement, because they were both on the ground, not on the cement. They were just running from the ground, that was crazy. But um downstairs, I could do three hundred thousand, I couldn't do two hundred thousand in the building. So it is very scary as we speak, and this addition would allow us to stay over.
Mm-hmm.
And then build and shut down the site.
And maybe if you're not, generally, like you said, maybe you put a whole sink, visual gap.
Absolutely. It would be, it would pop on straight times.
I saw how on T D with the eggs, the price of eggs.
Yeah, around there, no times.
Yes.
Yeah, they did a little, well, that's for T D, the crazy egg situation.
Yeah.
It's better, it's not bad still, but it's better.
I would try to use, use it out, but then you hear it again.
Okay.
Do you want to expand it to, or make bigger?
We're gonna make it a little bit bigger.
Quite a lot.
I wanna add like twenty-five feet on the south side.
On the south side.
Closer to Frank's building actually. Who needs my, my restaurant?
I, I know not, the battery.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna buy the building, but I told him the other way I would buy it is if I didn't span, because it'd be a long, long, long spot.
Yeah.
I mean, and it's where we made our name. You know what I mean?
What uh, what is, have you already submitted, or are you trying to find if you can?
I'm, I'm here just to kind of feel out the situation and, and then check out how over the balcony, you know, getting.
How much of land do you have going that way?
So, from, from our side of the building to Frank's property line fence, um forty-two feet.
How much?
Forty-two.
How much you wanna go?
Twenty-five.
Aren't your, are your uh air conditioning utilities on this side?
No, it's all the other side.
Okay, I'm trying to.
Yeah, everything, all of that's full, good cable, everything comes in from the uh utility side of the building, which is on right of the corner of the building.
Yeah, I used to go there fifty years ago in Nope and Penelope and uh Russell.
Yeah, yeah, there are plenty of stories all the time.
Yeah.
Some of them are very scary.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But uh.
That's a close line bar, I go there.
I love that, oh, what was your bar?
Well, I had Moonlow, that was.
Okay, okay.
My family had that in Chickers Street, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It was sold, I, well, I sold both of them now, but uh.
I wrote the old one, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been in there.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we, we did that for seven years and it's.
Good.
We uh, we kind of did a wall. We always used to buy one, it would be like.
It's a good thing, but it's, you know, it's a, it's a.
We wanted to do it really nice, and if I can get this stuff, then we'll open for dinner at least four nights a week. Once we get our footing again and can go in in that direction, we also want a baker in there.
Oh, yeah.
I have a lot of bakers on staff, so my daughter makes cookies, I can pieced cookies. Um, she does cupcakes, our dad really makes the most amazing homemade cheesecakes. We might, who sells it? No one in our area sells a good old-fashioned food cinnamon roll.
Correct.
I went to spin uh, uh stands for my son's wedding to take for the boys, I was gonna take some cinnamon rolls and coffee to them in the morning. And I'm like, yeah, cinnamon rolls, yeah, those cinnamon, don't set stuff right on, one cinnamon roll. So we did.
Something that is really missing around here.
It is, it is, it'd be fantastic. We looked at a personal board as well, um, but the chance that they're all that building.
Stay in one of those, stay in one.
Yeah, and they don't back to everybody anymore, so we posted that, that post about the egg crisis and should we add this surcharge out, because I fight all of that. Um, and, and the hundred and twenty dollars on that Facebook post were, please don't be, don't go, do what you gotta do to, to stay at this house, so.
Do, do you have any, do you have your license?
We have your license. If I were to open for dinner, I would, if there isn't a liquor license available here right now, but that doesn't mean I can't get one.
Right, I mean, it's changed a lot of the rules, you know, like when.
We don't ever wanna be a shot at your bar.
Right.
But I would love to ask, I'm a bourbon girl, so I would love to ask, I think I'd be old-fashioned.
Well, you have a forty-two proof right now.
But we're uh, yeah, we're looking at all of those things. Um, and they're really nice names, we have mom and daddy, because my daughter runs the place for me, five, seven years, I'm gonna want to back away a little bit, um, and let her take over.
Yeah.
You know, let the young blood keep this thing going, she knows, she works in the kitchen most days.
Hmm.
She's greasable in that kitchen, she knows what to do. She knows what we serve, and that there is no exception for anything less than, than what we're trying to present. And that's, uh, things that restaurants don't do anymore, they don't hire fresh people. You have food that's full of preservatives, every meat that comes in my building is fresh. Burgers never frozen, that chicken is fresh. If you could have bred a piece of chicken in that place, we grew it. So it saves from conservative and frozen food garbage, you know, we make meat up on Monday, it's all made from scratch.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough being a restaurant, because the product is so high.
It is.
You know, and um, my, I, my cousin has a steakhouse, does a baby now, he had, with the pandemic, was, the egg shut down.
Oh, yeah, me too.
And he, we had, he had, I couldn't do his life when I still had a bar, six bars still was.
Sure.
You know, but um, well, he had, he used to have a ten-dollar steak on Wednesday, it's just your business there. Now, the meat alone is like nine dollars.
Oh, sure.
And he says, you know, he went to fourteen, and he was like, why, why would you? He said, I didn't make anything fourteen.
Right.
I mean, cool, it's like.
Oh, yeah.
Bars are terrible.
Remember the lamb and that sandwich I gave you? But it's kind of one of those last leaders to bring people in. Twenty-one dollars, it should be closer to thirty, but it's a beautiful sandwich. But at the same time, we're trying to service the neighborhood, give people in, serve them good food every time.
Yes. Now's a really tough time for.
It is.
Restaurants are struggling, product, product is ridiculous.
It's, I remember when you were a chef, it's not a lone leader, I get a paycheck like everybody else, you know what I mean?
I know.
Right, right.
You know, my liquor license was a three thousand a year, and we got the BMW, it's something, three hundred dollar license.
Sure.
And, you know, there's no balance there, you know, the price is.
Right, yeah, you have to love what you do, otherwise you kind of just spend on wheels.
I wanted to, you know, forty years, I had a lot of different ideas. My partner was my uncle, he sold, I died, he didn't do it much. The time he passed, I was spurred out from the business, you know.
Sure. I've been doing it for a long time, I was the restaurant manager in both restaurants itself, he's trying to date himself.
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah, and then seven years, I cheat, you know, dating myself, but you know, seven years, I cheated, back in the day, so.
Cheated for a while.
Yeah, we're good at that, it's exciting.
Yeah, I heard that.
We've got some pretty cool ideas, so there are things on my menu, because I did everything there.
Yeah.
There are things on my menu that are from that who says. There are queso, it's a cheat, trust me. I make the merinos, I, I do their nachos, I do all that stuff. I do it at all, they all cheat, it's not a common stuff. I love the food. I just don't want it to be full of garbage, so, absolutely.
So.
That's been a nice chat with you.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll see you again.
Yeah, what was your?
So that's no time I retired, and that was four years ago when he sold, I think.
So he's still.
He's still managing.
He.
Still managing, it is even.
He still blocks it there like once a week.
Yeah.
When he's in town. But I mean, he just had a little grand baby, so they're headed that way.
Yeah.
And he wanted to come to this and then have you have town. So I said, come, and go send and gather information, this is education for me as well, so.
Oh, yeah.
It's a good process for you to learn, especially.
It is, absolutely.
Potentially go through it.
Yeah. Well, we wanna make sure, when I, when we first decided to turn that back into a restaurant make come, instead of this opening, being and presenting what we wanted to do to be reclassified as a restaurant, because they, that had been borrowed back for, they had been closed for so long. And um, I brought part of my business plan with me, and one of the gentlemen said, he's the most well-written businessman that I've ever seen. It's because I believe in what I do, it's so easy to speak of it because.
Love it.
I do love it.
Aggression, right.
I do, I do, I love what we do. And we, we're not doing on plastic plates and plastic glasses, we're doing um, you know, with nicer coloring, with some of the steak houses I go to, but uh, like.
Real players, I get it, I, I get one of the same waters.
Yeah, real, real plates, real glasses, real solar, um, we wanted to be a nice item.
True.
Absolutely. And we had great dinner, I mean, when we were doing the Friday thing.
Yeah.
But I just couldn't draw it out there. But that's probably because it was more the elite. And now I've got an manager that lets her run it at night time for me, so.
That's a pleasure.
Yeah, it'd be kind of nice, maybe Wes and I was gone down to Old Days, um, we could draw a little bit from.
But I saw like so much piece of the play, it was loud.
That's right.
You know, and, it was, it's, it's tough. But I think, you know, with the Ford garage edge, up the street, but.
Sure.
It's gonna take a little time.
Absolutely.
And you're looking more exposed, so.
Absolutely, I, I uh.
Traffic wise.
I look forward to it.
I'm curious about one thing, what was the bunny, this person in the bunny castle?
That was my daughter, my grandson.
Okay.
Did you think about that?
Yes, I, I don't know what's going on here.
Yeah, we had these about a year that day, and some drinks for the kids and.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that was my daughter. Yeah, we have Sam calls Christmas time, and he's a bunny, so.
That was four ago, right?
Just four.
First of all, that you're even open.
Yeah, only for a few hours, just when the kids come in and have breakfast with these wedding, it's not cute. Um, I'm not sure if I would do it on that day anymore, probably, because people go in their holidays. And I, I don't like people who don't want their families.
Yeah, I agree.
We're open seven days a week, so.
You're off.
Six days a year.
Only Saturday, I mean, that'd still be cool.
So we might do like a Saturday before, just to, to have the still-dying events, but.
Very good.
Yeah, one kid, the little Easter bunny, she's my five-year-old friend.
Oh.
Yeah, he was loving standing in the street dancing on the grass.
It was an empty group there.
Oh, yeah. He was very excited that people were waiting and beating.
I mean, it's good, you know, I go to all the councils, I mean, it's what I'm saying. You know, people will put on a Facebook, puts around, I thought they come to a meeting, to learn a little bit, you know, and then you would have to ask, is it hard to come up, rubbish, everything's good, it's, you know, it's in the aisle, it's in the chair, and. I mean, my first time, there'd be fifteen, twenty people, now there's three of us in the council.
I don't know, you know, I haven't been in a while, but there was always people here.
Yes.
And that one is, well, maybe just with this computer stuff.
It was online, you know.
And I rarely spoke to her, but then she had a big dog.
Right.
And that dog, I just knew one, I want something to scare her or something. And she'd pick that dog and inside he'd catch her, and I'd meet, and you know, to talk about her and stuff.
There's a, there's.
The dog kept going.
She says, I'm curious, the dogs seem gross.
Yes.
I don't know, it's, it's.
Yes. Like sixty-one years old, it's like, man, what the heck was that, serious things?
Yeah.
I mean, I actually, that's four times in my life, I don't.
I mean, I'm. I just. Please.
Not the big part.
I don't know.
Very easy.
So it's just, just asking, I mean, we're just replacing all these areas, so that shouldn't be.
I think that's.
Yeah, and I know about me telling this part and all that, yes, so, that's funny. There is a little.
Does Mike turn on?
He for, he like, sort of, Empire and uh, who recommended Chris? Mark Funtella. Mark Funtella? Um, a paraxis, he does all the.
Oh, yeah.
He does all the children, the, oh, I can pull it, casino and all that.
Sure, that's the new building.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Because then she don't have.
Yeah, well, she's doing all the things, and I've talked to, there's in my place all the time, we talked about, uh, or she put that, there's a storm sewer right outside the.
You're like, you're a village.
That would be a couple of, that'd be actually my help. Dale, I love, you get that down.
No, I can.
Um, and I'd like to, I'd want those this way.
That's why I.
Similar to, like, to be, I like being straight down.
I did watch it last week.
Remember on the weekend?
Oh, yeah.
Nobody don't love it. You'll be, you'll have to ask, at least that was, that's huge, and that's probably downset.
I don't know.
That's.
It's brilliant.
Parting.
I'm not sure if I can listen to it.
We're like, we're like, we're like.
I don't know, you mean the hot nut sucker?
No, um, sauce.
No, well, not even, maybe there's.
A prank place?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a, that was like, oh, so right over there, I didn't tell you. But, you know, I think that, the Mackel truck guy parks in there, and I think there's somebody there that works on cars, or not, it's a shop owner, and Frank's got, Frank's got his place down there.
You know, I heard about that kind of stuff, if you're taking it all in front of you.
I would have it very careful.
We have that.
I'm gonna go down.
Yeah, we have, so we share from, everybody from the stand trucks and the truck, lawn here, it's just not, from the work floor, so, because we pay them all.
It's a beautiful.
So, so ours. Probably put one in there, and you're creating rocks in front of the house. So we wanna do that.
Okay, so. You put your truck in.
Well, I don't mind if it's not there. I don't think that's hard, I wish it was. Go back. Last, we're back for me today, we didn't back last night. So, so.
You saw that comment.
I'm friends with like an art.
So you want.
This is a comic show.
You saw it, and I saw it.
Person, and I thought, yes, you. Or she have all, that her P E there.
And the.
That little troll in there for us.
There are numbers. And then the, they have ten spots, they have, whether they're on Ben, or suddenly, will call and say, they've got twenty-five, seven o'clock, morning, start to call and that, so.
One of the neighbors.
I would say. Yeah, so.
Four years ago, basically.
Yeah, we're a part of, of the officer. That's what she was talking about, and I'm like, I don't care.
Yeah.
And it's like.
I remember.
And then. So, the people that were actually, worked up in the restaurant, we, she's a carefully watching, we actually answered. Uh, you can't, I don't think, you could have done it last time, in this condition, but it ended up being, I think he just can't turn it up, coming over the age of sixty-five. Now they're talking about putting something in there about the days of darkness, so, come up home.
Yeah.
I mean, if they want to do this. The vegetarian, American Candy Center bought it, started to rebuild its stand, they thought about the building, and actually, was very stable. And um, they were trying to decide whether they wanted to support it, I don't know, did the city make a deal with them, or they decided to leave it, but they're back to what kind of it is. But everyone's into building.
The old enough.
Yeah, I asked about, they would have to do it as well.
So they were telling me that the owner, or.
Yes.
That's it, for my position, not, not, you know, actually, we look, and that there's so much mold inside there now, and a lot more that they have.
The U A W.
Yeah, so they're.
Because I think worst of the interval is.
Yeah, I was there on inspection, construction manager was telling me this story, because they want building, just lay off the system, because they close ministry, to go over here after.
Yeah.
Ministry, so that it was, they got to move them right into the U A W, as a temporary office, and then the construction.
I need a.
I'm here, I'm here, I'm here, I'm a citizen, they do that, I mean, it's a nice person.
It is.
Is it?
Yeah, I looked into that.
I issue of. Why, they're very, it's, it's.
And we went to.
We, we. That's, that's a man.
I don't see.
You gotta learn how to pause your slide.
Plug it.
All right, we're back in session, it's seven twenty-three. In the case of an area variance, the board applies a standard of practical difficulty. That is, does the evidence demonstrate that a variance would comply with the purpose and intent of the zoning code, and that literal enforcement of the zoning code would result in practical difficulty? We make the following findings of facts. Whether this is a use variance or an error variance, we find it is an area variance. Whether the property will yield a substantial return, and there can be a beneficial use of the property without the variance, we find that there could be beneficial uses of the property even without the variance. Whether the variance is substantial and the minimum necessary.
Are we doing landscaping, or?
Uh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, let me specify, we're gonna do the landscaping variance first. So this is a variance to twelve ninety-eight oh four.
Yes, sir.
Um, so, Mr. Ray Hill, on the question of whether the variance is substantial and the minimum necessary, do you have any thoughts?
Uh, it's substantial, for sure.
Yeah, I, I agree that it's substantial in that he's asking for a variance for the entire frontage along Creek Road, which is substantial. Any other thoughts? Whether the variance will adversely affect the delivery of governmental services such as water, sewer, trash pickup, or fire safety?
Not at all.
Again, this is the landscaping variance we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Whether the property owner purchased the property with knowledge of the zoning restrictions, we assume, since the zoning restrictions were in place when you bought the property, that you were aware of them. Um, whether the owner's predicament can be obviated through some method other than a variance?
No, I don't, no.
Whether the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance will be observed and substantial justice done by granting the variance?
No.
Mr. Cummins, if I could just ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
So, you know, the purpose, of course, of the landscaping, is it strictly for beautification, or is it for screening?
Um.
Both.
Both.
I would say both, but um.
So, you know, from a screening perspective, we gotta keep in mind, that, you know, our property is not open, you know, it does have a seven-foot-high board-on-board fence running down the entire property, so you are gonna have the screening, you know, kind of limiting the view onto the site.
Yeah.
Just again, for purposes of, of that, from a beautification perspective, again, I just go back to, you know, just stating again, that as far as down the entire roadway, I think it's gonna be a five-hundred-foot patch of just, you know, the trees and the shrubs that will be standing alone for quite some time.
But the landscaping could beautify that fence, too.
I apologize, sir.
I said that landscaping could beautify that fence down the road, too.
One more time, I'm sorry, I'm.
That landscaping could beautify that.
Oh, beautify.
Fence.
Over a period of a long time, yes. Yes, I understand, sir.
And you asked me whether the purpose was, um, whether the purpose was beautification or screening, and I can't get myself inside the heads of the council members who pass the ordinance, we can only go by the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
But I think your point is correct, and well-taken, that there is a fence there, to the extent screening is an issue, there is a fence, so, okay. Um, what, whether the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance will be observed and substantial justice done by granting the variance?
No.
Okay. Whether the property in question has unique or except, exceptional circumstances or conditions that do not apply to other properties in the area or the district?
Well, the unique quality is, it has two sides to it, two exposed sides, so.
Right.
We're dealing with two entrances or.
Two frontages, correct.
Two frontages, right.
Uh, that's true, I would also note that the, the De Geronimo property across the street, uh, at Alexander and Northfield has, um, multiple frontages, and they've landscaped all of their frontages, or in the process of landscaping their frontages. Anything else on that question? Whether the conditions necessitating the variance existed as a result of the actions of the owner? I don't think so. No.
No.
Whether the essential character of the neighborhood would be substantially altered, or whether adjoining properties would suffer substantial detriment as a result of the variance. Thoughts on that? Mr. Conkey, any thoughts?
I don't think that'd be altered at all, it's not. On the vegetation? Read the question one more time, please.
Whether the essential character of the neighborhood would be substantially altered, or whether adjoining properties would suffer substantial detriment as a result of the landscaping variance?
Mr. Cummins, before he answers that, can I show something in evidence?
Sure.
So again, just again, as I mentioned before I came here, again, I took a picture looking from the corner right down the road here, and of course, our property's on the right, you can see that there is absolutely nothing else being done down Creek Road, and it's just area. As it's looking from West Creek, the intersection, looking down Creek Road.
Yeah, just for the record, there, there's a picture that shows, um, Crick, Crick, what, that's Crick Road, right?
Yes, sir.
Uh.
Crick, Crick Road looking north.
Crick Road looking north, and it shows no landscaping.
It's pretty carefree.
Yeah, and I think the, when it comes to the question of essential neighbor, essential character of the neighborhood? To me, it's, uh, a question of the current character of the neighborhood, or the, um, intended or envisioned character of the neighborhood. Clearly, the, um, council envisioned landscaped industrial area, that is not the case today. So, I think that question is.
Yeah, my, my problem is, we don't have a lot of opportunity to make an improvement. And we need to seize every one that we can to make a, a visual improvement on properties.
Yeah, and to actualize the, uh, intent of the, uh, zoning code as passed by council. Anything else on that one? Uh, whether the, whether the granting of the variance will confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied to other lands, structures, or buildings in the same district?
Yes.
Mr. Velp, yes, says yes, it would, because other dis- areas are supposed to be landscaped, even if they're not, they are supposed to be landscaped. Um, whether a literal interpretation of the zoning code would deprive an applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district?
No.
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 I think we all agree it would not deprive them of rights. Those are our findings. Can I have a motion on the variance?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance on the landscaping.
Second? Mr. Ray Hill?
Uh, no.
No, would you, uh, please second the motion?
I'm sorry, second the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Conkey, seconded by Mr. Ray Hill. Vote on the motion, Mr. Ray Hill?
No.
Mr. Velp?
Yes.
Mr. Conkey?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, three yeses and a no, the most, the motion carries, the variance is granted as to the landscaping. Now we'll do our findings of fact with respect to the variance to section twelve ninety-two point one one, the paved surface. Whether variance is a use or an area variance, it is an area variance. Whether the, the property will yield a substantial return and there can be beneficial use of the property without the variance, yes, the property can still be used without the variance for many uses. Whether the variance is substantial and the minimum necessary, is the variance substantial?
Yes.
And the variance is substantial because?
You're asking for the entire lot to be hard-packed and not just a small percentage of it.
And if I may say, is it Mr. Vilk?
Yes.
Um, due to the nature, again, of this type of operation, again, trucks are, again, not predicated to just following a single lane, you know, and just kind of going into a certain path. You know, again, these are trucks that are kind of run by various operators, again, that are gonna be going, you know, dumping loads here, you know, picking up loads there. I mean, it's, it's not really conducive, again, to a single lane, uh, ease of, let's say, circular motion as far as that's concerned. So, by having it hard-packed, it gives the most optimum, uh, ability, again, for, again, the land to be used, you know, from a practical perspective for this type of, you know, sit- situation. Um, again, uh, you know, you're probably looking at, if you were to create, even a lane, as, uh, Mr. Cummins had suggested initially in our, uh, previous discussion, you know, you're probably looking at, you know, seventy thousand plus dollars, again, to, to do something that, dealing, I mean, this is a very, uh, heavy type of, uh, truck, again, that we're dealing with six to eight inches of concrete, highly reinforced. You know, a super sub base, you know, probably at least eight to twelve inches. So, I mean, you're talking about a significant amount of money here for a truck that's not even gonna stay on that lane.
I, I understand the predicament, I mean, it, unfortunately, when we look at it, a, a cost perspective is not a special condition. You know, that, that's not a special condition for the property. That's, I mean, I want a, I want a, uh, I want a chipped driveway, but I can't have it. The zoning codes tell me that I cannot have a gravel driveway at my residence.
And in no disrespect, again, to your, your scenario, again, we're talking about, uh, a concrete plant here versus a residence, it's a completely.
And I have two concrete plants in the village that have a complete concrete surface on their whole entire use space. That's what I'm looking at, if we, if we compare apples to apples, if I give, if somebody special conditions for one thing, I'm gonna have two others asking me, why couldn't I do that?
They would have the same conditions.
So, what are you saying, Ioplo and Carr Brothers, that entire area is concreted?
Yes, Ioplo, Carr Brothers, uh, S R M, they're all concrete.
Well, when we did us, when we did H G E, it was a hard-packed surface that was approved.
And there's a lot of things that were not done legally on that one, unfortunately, um, since it's come under new ownership. Um, it has, it has turned around and they have, they have abided by our ordinances.
Understand, sir.
I would also note that one of the, um, objectives of a zoning board is to minimize the variance. So even if you were allowed hard-packed on some of it and concrete on the rest, uh, that would minimize the amount of, um, you know, the, uh, the amount of exception, the amount of variance, and you're not willing to put any extra concrete, so.
I'm not saying, again, I can't speak for the owner, because he's not here, unfortunately, and that's something that, again, he'll have to, uh, again, take up with the mayor, or this board, or whomever, uh, as far as that's concerned, because I, again, I don't wanna speak for him. Uh, but I can just, you know, share with you from an economic hardship, you know, you may not use it as a justification, but I mean, it's quite a real situation, again, for a, a business owner that's investing millions of dollars into your community. And then to, you know, have an additional burden is something, again, that is, um, that's not, uh.
And we're not disagreeing with you.
Yeah.
We're just saying that as a board, we're required to follow the standards for granted variance.
Hundred percent, yes, I understand.
And that's not one of the standards.
Again, that's why we're asking for relief, you know, from a.
Absolutely, I understand.
Practical and an economic perspective on that area, just because of the type of business that it's being used for and the various type of trucks coming through there. It's, it's just a lane that would just never really, no one's gonna just stay on that lane, it's, it's really just not practical.
Again, then we would ask for your, uh, input on what would be practical, what would work for paved services versus hard-packed? And if the answer is none, well, then that's our answer.
Okay, so, at this point, the owner says he does not want to put any type of hard surface in that yard area.
I understand. Whether the variance will adversely affect the delivery of governmental services such as water, sewer, trash pickup, or fire safety?
No.
No.
No, it would not affect those services. Whether the property owner purchased the property with knowledge of the zoning restrictions, again, we assume you did. Whether the owner's predicament can be obviated through some method other than a variance?
No.
Not to our knowledge. Whether the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinances will be observed and substantial justice done by granting the variance?
No.
No.
So if I may, again, uh, reiterate again, you know, a hard-packed surface is not like, again, where you have just, just this dirt area that's causing a lot of, you know, contaminants and dust, you know, to be created up in the air, I mean, it's still gonna be a hard surface, I mean, it's just not concrete or asphalt. You know, you still have the practicality of a hard surface, that's why they call it hard-packed, it's just not how you define it in the code of concrete or asphalt.
No.
You're still getting a hard surface.
I'm not, uh, would, would that be some type of engineer that knows about paving and that, all I know is the code says very clearly, co- cold asphalt, chipping and gravel are not allowed, so. Whether the own, prop, whether the property in question has unique or exce- exceptional circumstances or conditions that do not apply to other properties in the area and the district? I think the answer to that is no, in the sense that we have other concrete plants and they are hard-paved. And I asked you multiple times whether there was a special circumstance of your property.
Well, I'm gonna say size, probably, I would say the size of it compared to maybe the other properties, again, would also be a, a cost issue. There is a size difference between this property and Ioplo and Carr Brothers.
Whether the conditions necessitating the variance exist as a result of the actions of the owner? I don't think so.
No.
Whether the essential character of the neighborhood would, would be substantially altered, or whether adjoining properties would suffer substantial detriment as a result of the variance? Um, I would say the answer to that is yes, my finding would be yes, in that, um, the other properties in the ar- area, as they are, um, being developed, redeveloped, are complying with hard surface requirements. Everybody from, um, De Geronimo's property to, um, Carr Brothers and, uh.
N P K.
Yeah, N P K.
Yep.
Uh, all the rest of them are complying with, with this requirement, so yes, um, the essential character of the neighborhood would be altered. Would the granting of the variance will confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied to other lands, structures, or buildings?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, would be the only one that's not, that's allowed hard-packed.
Mm-hmm.
Whether a literal interpretation of the zoning code would deprive an applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district? Our finding is no, it would not deny you of those rights. Anything else, any other findings by the board, anything else, anybody on the board would like to add? You have a motion on the variance?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the hard-packed variance.
I'll second the motion.
Motion has been made, seconded by Mr. Ray Hill, vote on the motion, Mr. Ray Hill?
No.
Mr. Velp?
No.
Mr. Conkey?
No.
Board votes, or the chair votes no. So the variance for the landscaping has been approved, but the variance for the, uh, hard surface paving has been denied. With respect to the, um. Landscaping variance, the applicant has, uh, the applicant shall apply for permits in accordance with these variants, or apply to the, um, planning commission within twelve months. After time, if no actions taken, the variance will become null and void. And with respect to the hard surface, the appeal of this decision is appealable to the Cuyahoga County Common Police Court. Any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your turn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second the motion.
All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.